Welcome, everyone.
Okay. Chairperson Thompson. Okay.
Present.
Vice President, Vice Chairman, I was trying to think of it, Vice Chairman Johnson.
Present.
Okay, and I'm here, Jeff Albaugh-Clerk, and a member, Secretary. Okay.
There we go, pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with which we have justice for all. Okay. Number four, approval of agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
And I will second that.
I will third that.
And just a voice vote. Sorry. Favor say aye.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? The agenda is approved.
Okay, we are now ready for audience comments regarding the items on the agenda.
Should do the approval of the minutes first.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of July 29, 2025.
And I'll support.
Awesome.
And that'll be a roll call vote.
All those in favor?
Chairperson Thompson, your vote.
Aye.
And I will vote yes. Joanna?
Yes.
Three yes? I'll wait. That's right.
All right, we're now ready for audience comments regarding items on the agenda.
So I, I think maybe what we could do is just take general public comment now, and when you get to the public hearing part of this hearing, the applicants or whatever, whatever interested parties, they could submit specifically on those agenda items.
Okay.
And go on to the notice public hearing.
Okay, notice public hearings.
We have a public hearing is actually number of items of, of identified areas where the zoning board of appeals will be considering map interpretation. And I think at this point, we would turn it over to our township attorney to explain.
Right, so everyone knows my name is Seth Coaches, my firm's the Township Attorney for Marshall Township. I know there's been a lot of correspondence circulating about tonight's meeting, so my communications with the township, I thought it would just be helpful maybe to do a little bit of an introduction so everyone knows why we're here, the role of the ZBA, what is within their scope and what is not within their scope. So the ZBA is holding a meeting tonight to review and take potential actions regarding whether the zoning map correction should be made to the existing zoning map that's in effect today. To be clear, this is not a rezoning. The ZBA does not have the authority to rezone property, there's a separate procedure for that, it's through the Township Planning Commission. Any, any rezoning procedure starts with the planning commission, they make a recommendation, it goes over to county planning, who may make, give input to the township board, it's not binding, but ultimately, the township board makes a decision whether or not to approve a rezoning request. That's because they're a legislative body, they have that authority, a planning commission doesn't, they're an administrative body. The ZBA has absolutely no role in rezoning property. We're not rezoning property here today, what you're looking at is you're looking at the record before you, and you're trying to figure out whether or not that zoning map is correct. Okay, we're not rezoning. This has been an issue that Marshall Township has been dealing with for quite some time, this isn't anything new that just got brought up recently. I believe, I think Jeff, well over a year, this has been on the, on the township's plate.
Probably three years.
Okay, and, and quite frankly, this is nothing new either. Okay, the reason being is as time goes on, for whatever reason, sometimes the zoning maps don't get updated. Now, the Michigan Legislature recognized that when it enacted the Zoning Enabling Act. And the reason why they recognize that is because sometimes things happen, sometimes maps don't get updated when they're supposed to. Specifically, the zoning, the Zoning Enabling Act vests the zoning board of appeals, they shall hear and decide questions that arise from the administration of the zoning ordinance, including interpretations of the zoning maps. That's why this question is here for you today, to interpret that zoning app. I'm studying MCL 125.36031. Additionally, when I look through your zoning ordinance, looking at section, section 16 dash 4A3, it's similar language to the Zoning Enabling Act, it says interpretations to act upon all questions as they may arise in the administration and enforcement of the zoning ordinance, including interpretation of the zoning map. So that's what vests, that's what vests this zoning board of appeals with the authority to interpret that map and make a correction if necessary. You are not changing the underlying zoning district classification, you're correcting a map. When we talk about how to do this, look at the record itself. There's going to be public comment, I'm sure, during the public hearing portion, you could listen to what, what the public has to say, this is not a Q and A. Okay, you listen to what they have to say, any public comment. And if you have follow-up questions after the fact, we can address that, but it's not intended to be a back and forth. At the conclusion of the public comment portion of the public hearing, you review the record, you call deliberations, you discuss the request, or the, the interpretation, then you make a decision. Maybe there's a decision to make a map correction, maybe there's not, but that's what we're here, that's what we're here for. As far as the procedure, something I wanted, wanted to point out here, when, when this got brought up to me, that this was going to be a, a ZBA meeting for tonight, the Zoning Enabling Act does not require notice of public hearing to be published, it doesn't require mailed notices to be sent. Despite that, when I spoke with the, with the township, it was discussed and it was determined that in the interest of transparency, to put everyone on notice, that we do the mailers, that we do the notice of public hearing, so the public would have it, and, and, and that's exactly what we did. And in large part, I'm glad everyone's here, because that means notice got out to the parties it was supposed to be, and notice made it to, to any interested party who, who wants to come. As far as remedies, if someone's not happy with, with the outcome tonight, whatever that decision is, maybe there's a correction, maybe there's not a correction. If someone is not happy, they have their remedies. Okay, a remedy is they could appeal to the Calhoun County Circuit Court, and a circuit court judge will review the decision of the zoning board of appeals, and I'm not going to get to the standard of, of what that is, okay? Secondly, there's always a request for rezoning, if someone's not happy with what happens here, a, a property owner, they could submit an application for a rezoning request in, with, with the Township Planning Commission, that's independent of the ZBA. Okay, and, and we don't tell people, I'm just saying, what, what I feel the remedies are, it's up to an aggrieved party to determine whether or not they want to file an appeal, it's up to a property owner to decide whether or not they want to file an application to, to the planning commission for rezoning, which ultimately gets considered by the, by the township board. So that's my summary for the public and for the ZBA of how and the reason for tonight's meeting. If there's any questions from the ZBA, I'm, I'm happy to answer it, otherwise, the recommendation would be to start processing the requests, or the, not the requests, the, the parcels that are listed on, on your notice, and I see that there's five.
I can make a motion to actually open up the public hearing.
Good.
I will second that.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Motion's good.
I think it'd probably be good to explain that people just, if they wish to provide a comment, they can come up with the rostrum, tell us your name, spell it, if you will, please, so that the record is very clear. I don't know about this, Seth, but normally at board, at township board meetings, we have them indicate whether they're a resident of the township or not, but they don't need to.
It's not required, I, I would ask that you state your name, please, I do, I do put it in the minutes. It would help if you could spell your last name, because I just want to make sure everything's as accurate as I can have it.
And if you can refer to the parcel number that you wish to comment on. If you want to comment on all of them, you can, you can just say that, but if you want, if you're addressing just one, that would be helpful as well.
Chair Thompson, if I may, I know we're in public hearing, I just want to recognize the, have the minutes stipulate the public comment, or I should say written comments that we've received. So on September 17 of 2025, although we did ask for comments, by September 12, we received an attorney letter, lead from the land bank attorney from Warner Norcross against September 17 of 2025. And then we also on September 12, received an attorney letter, recommend, representing, excuse me, Dick and Sharon Sweet, from Thomas Parker Beer and Lindsay. And also, tonight, I did receive public comment from Glenn Kowalski, and I can certainly read that later, but I did want to recognize what has been received at the township. That's all I'm aware of.
And for public hearings, those, those written comments will be entered into the record.
Hey, if anybody wants to speak, the rostrum is open.
For the background, again, my name is Richard Lindsay, L-I-N-D-S-E-Y. I'm going to speak regarding two different parcels, one very brief. So 15230 C Drive North, parcel 1627200901 is a parcel that was purchased by the Marshall Area Economic Development Alliance, and I am the attorney for that entity. We did communicate with Ms. Johnson as the chair of the planning commission and raised that we thought that it was incorrect on the map. And we are happy that it's being, we will, I say this, we will be happy if it is corrected to highway service commercial, we believe that's the proper zoning for that, that parcel. And I'm also speaking G Drive North, which is parcel 161400311, I represent Dick and Sharon Sweet. And Ms. Johnson again's stated for the record that I did include a letter, so I'm going to assume that you've all read it and you've looked at the attachments, so I'm not going to repeat every single thing in the letter. But just as a quick summary, this is a parcel of property that sits next to the bus garage that's at the corner of G Drive and Old 27th. In 1991, there were several parcels there that were part of Jesse Hubbard's estate, and they were sold to Avery Leasing, Myron Avery was the owner of Avery Leasing and Show and Rock. And those parcels were later combined, 1993, Avery Leasing built the truck facility that's there today. It was then transferred to MA Ventures in 1999. From 1999 forward, as far as we could find records, it's been classified to township as 201 commercial for tax purposes, shown in tax statements and the notice of assessment forms that come out annually as being 201 commercial. In 2011, those two parcels were split back into the original two parcels. And number 11, which is the one we're talking about here tonight, remained classified as 201, and taxes were paid on it as the commercial up through the current ownership when my clients purchased it. My client purchased the property in question from Mr. Avery's son and daughter, who were the, the principals in MA Ventures, and they, they continued to pay taxes at a low, at a commercial rate. And this is, this is one of those things, right, understand why this came up, it shows in the master plan as being highway service, shows in the tax map that's included as part of the master plan as being highway service. My clients bought it after checking, talking, making, you know, having representations from the sellers that it was owned highway service, the county GIS shows this highway service. The township has recognized this is, this property as being a commercial property in tax bills and in various tax forms since at least 1999, 25 years of taxes were paid at the commercial rate. And so I did try to do what due diligence I could. I talked to Ron DeGraw, who was the township attorney since time began up until a few years ago. He's in the process of closing his office, he had just shredded within the last 30 days, 45 days, all the records to do with the township, and so if it had existed somewhere other than here, it would have been there. He was, he just didn't, wasn't able to give me any insight into this at all, just in talking with him. I did also contact county planning with the idea that if there had been a, a recommendation, as was discussed a few minutes ago, there would be a record with the county. And actually, when I was county attorney, we had a leak in the basement and water main burst, and there was about two feet of water in the basement. And so, a whole bunch of records were thrown away from this, this time period. I helped in the basement to go through them and throw them all away, and that's the other place I would have been if they weren't here. I spent a fair amount of time on, on the Marshall Chronicle website with the idea that I could track down a newspaper article of notice, something that would, would reference this property, and I went back to 1945. And it's a matter of, it's not like a Google search with that, right? And so it sort of pulls up the right things, and sometimes it pulls up stuff that has nothing to do with anything. And so, if I had found something one way or the other, I would have submitted it, I didn't find anything one way or the other. It did cross my mind that this might have been zoned, commercial, going back into the distant past. And again, reading through some of the things that, relative to the land bank, that, you know, that, that may be possible. I'm unable to find any records to show, to show that. So we are asking that the map be corrected to reflect what's in the tap, tax map, what has happened over the years, which is that it's been treated as commercial for upwards of 25 years. We would also know that if you were to modify this into being an agricultural parcel, it is an agricultural parcel that sits by itself, and it would end up being a situation of essentially spot zoning within that area, it's surrounded on three sides by commercial properties, and on the other side by agriculture property that's owned by my client as well. So I'm glad to answer any questions. Mr. Sweet is here, if you've got any questions about the transaction or anything, he can, he can answer, he's glad to ask that as well. Thank you for your time and attention.
So I'm off, I'm sorry about the sideshow, but I was trying to get a few PowerPoint slides up so we could chat off of these, because we're going to, discussing some pretty dry subjects, so I figured this is the better one to do.
Hey, real quick.
What's that, Lance Zorhoff, and I'm here on behalf of the 15290 15-mile road property. I'm here on behalf of the Calhoun County Land Bank. And the county is also an interested party here, because they are, the land bank is selling the property to the county for the sighting of a, a new recycling center. And so that's the basis for us being here. We submitted a more comprehensive review, written statement that contains everything, including some preemption arguments, I'm not going to go over that, I don't think it's applicable to your decision, but we do believe, you know, any local zoning, what they intend to do with the property, which is use it for a county building for a county, a government purpose, is not subject to local zoning. And that state requirements or state law actually governs waste management facilities, and so that preamps any local zoning. Here, but I guess what I want to focus on tonight is the authority tonight to review and make amendments, or not, yeah, essentially, I would call it amendment, I, I disagree with counsel, I do think this is an amendment, a rezoning, but it's under the guise of interpretation. So I pulled it right off your website, there's three different primary functions that the ZBA has, you guys, I'm sure know these. They're all state, they're all set forth in the Zoning Enabling Act. Number one is the one that's being relied on here. I think you guys also have a township ordinance that specifies, you know, your ability or right to interpret zoning ordinances that are adopted and what they mean. But ultimately, if the zoning act does not give you the authority to do it, you don't have it, and so these are your three primary functions. So underneath one, though, interpretation of zoning ordinance, the, that authority is triggered when there's an ambiguity. So you're looking at statutory language, the, the map, anything, and you're looking at, is there an ambiguity? An ambiguity is, can it be subject to two different interpretations? If it can, then you have to dig deeper, look at other things, and to determine what was intended, or what that, what language should be, or what meaning should be applied to the language. We go to the next slide, here's an example of an ambiguity. You have a metal fan, be a steel fan or a metallic fan. So in this context, you look deeper, you dig deeper, what do the documents say? If you don't have an ambiguity, you're supposed to apply the language as it's written, because that's the language that was adopted by the legislative body, the township board. And if there's no ambiguity, you apply it as that was what was intended, according to its plain language, hard stop. So if there is an ambiguity, your interpretation ability kicks in, or you're right, or authority kicks in, and you can make a decision, look at other documents in order to make that determination. When we do not have an ambiguity, which we don't have here, based on the documents that I've seen so far, now that isn't a comprehensive set of documents, because we still have a FOIA request that's outstanding, that we haven't received all the documents for, from, or responsive to. But if you have something that doesn't involve an ambiguity such as a mistake, where one thing was designated, but you believe something else was intended. Here, we're talking about the map saying one thing, light industrial, but you, but you believe that it was supposed to say agricultural, but if you look at light industrial, there's no ambiguity in what's being designated, it's light industrial, there's no, there's no area to interpret. There's no ambiguity that allows you to dig deeper and look at other things in order to determine which of the two meanings is appropriate here. When there's no ambiguity, you have to apply it as is, and it may result in consequences or, or an interpretation that is contrary than what you actually believe was intended. So if we go to the next slide, here's an example of that. An inclusion or exclusion of a, of a, of a comma could result in very different meanings. But that's what you're stuck with, because that's what the legislative body actually put in place in order to define here what the zoning was for these particular properties. If there's a mistake, I would agree with counsel that that should actually be subject to a formal amendment by the township board and should go through that whole process. These are valuable rights for all the local residents, as to what they can and can't do with their property, how they can develop it, what they can use it for. And, you know, something that shouldn't be just subject to an interpretation, it should go through the formal amendment process through the township board. And the township board is the one that has exclusive power to do that, under the Zoning Enabling Act, not the ZBA. So, and if it did go through those other channels, it's, it's our opinion that the, the rezoning is inappropriate here. There's several inquiries that you have to make underneath the ordinance, I think it's 18 dash 4, and I think the next slide has the different factors that you would look at, and this would be the township board looking at this. But I think it's relevant to consider what would be looked at if you're looking at a rezoning. It's a more intensive look, it's looking at, is the zoning use consistent with the township's master plan? Is the rezoning use compatible with the parcel's physical and environmental features? Is the rezoning consistent with surrounding uses, and it does have beneficial impacts to the surrounding area, and is the rezoning compatible with utilities and infrastructure available for the parcel? And here, it's our opinion that the answer to all the, all four of these is no. Rezoning to ag would not result in a more beneficial or better use. This parcel has always been designated as light industrial on the, on the map, and it has never been designated or used as ag in any way. And although I've seen some records from the township that talks about designating the parcel, or some inconsistencies on how the parcel was designated over time, they were all sometimes light industrial or a foundry use, which was a legal non-conforming foundry use, in a light industrial parcel or on a light industrial parcel, or switching from heavy industrial use to light. And it doesn't discuss, the parcel has, it, it doesn't touch on or designate that the parcel was ever zoned or used as ag. At least in the documents that I've seen. So the historical use and designation of the parcel shows evidence of a plan by the township to use the parcel as was designated, light industrial, it doesn't show a mistake. And if the township board reviews it, they should keep it as is. Another thing is the parcel is contaminated after decades of use as a foundry. And it's not suitable for ag use, so if you end up rendering, or changing the zoning to, or the township board would be the proper authority, but if it was changed, it would render the parcel unusable for any real purpose, which wouldn't benefit anyone, township, any of its residents, or the, us as the owners of that property. And third, the parcel is served by highways, utilities, et cetera, suitable for, desirable for a light industrial use, and what currently the county and the land bank are working towards, which is a recycling center, which this area is in dire need of. The, the county has looked at this for the last two years to determine the need for a new recycling center and consolidating some of their other recycling centers onto a spot. They found there was a desperate need for it, and before, and they identified this particular parcel as the one best suited for that, that purpose. And it's one that's really does, is desirable and necessary for the township residents in the larger region. There's been a lot of investment into this so far, and the county and the land bank continue to push forward with their plans for the recycling center, and ask that the ZBA tonight agree that those plans are in the best interest of the township and its residents, and vote no on having it rezoned or interpreting it as something other than light industrial. Thank you. And I, any questions, I'd be more willing to answer them.
Rachel Foster, I'm also with Warner Norcross and Judd, and here on behalf of the Calhoun County Land Bank, regarding the same property that my partner just spoke about. He touched a little bit on our written submission to you, which referenced our opinion that there's some preemption going on as it relates to the township's ability to regulate the county's use of this property for recycling purposes. And I'm not going to reiterate that here today. He also went through the legal argument about whether this board has the authority to do what you're trying to accomplish tonight, which is to, through an interpretation, change a zoning classification for property that is currently owned by the land bank and is planned for a future recycling center. I wanted to respond to a few things that the township attorney said at the beginning of this meeting about this not, not being anything new, that something that you've been struggling with for at least three years. And the land bank, as a property owner, has been involved and has spent significant time, energy, and money on this site since about 2012. It has vested rights as well, and while we're sympathetic to, to what you're going through, I would ask you to stop for a moment and think about if you were the property owner with a contaminated piece of property that was a brownfield site, that had historically been used as a foundry, and had a zoning board of appeals wanting to change it to agricultural, which, as my colleague pointed out, would essentially deprive the land bank, any property owner for, for that matter, of any possible use of that property. There's, there's no way an agricultural use of that property is possible. Not in its current condition, not in any world where we could possibly clean it up enough to, to make use of it. So I, I just wanted you to think about the vested rights that they have, and also the reliance that all of the property owners place on looking at the zoning map, and being able to rely on what it says in looking at your master plan and understanding what the future intentions are for that property. They've been a property owner since 2012, and have relied on this being light industrial, and are now down the road on a county project that they've been working on with the county for many years, and there's this attempt to switch the zoning, not from light industrial to heavy industrial, but from one of the more intensive land uses you can have but from one of the more intensive land uses you can have to a de minimis one. It's way down the scale. That is very, very significant. I also want you to think about the land bank's job in this community. Its full purpose in existing and being created by the county, by the state land bank authority, is to put property back to productive use. That's its job. And it is doing what I would characterize as responsible development. It's not citing the county's recycling center on a green space. It's trying to develop a property that's already contaminated. What better use of this property than as a recycling center? That's fulfilling its mission of putting this property back to productive use and, um, continuing with responsible land development. I also wanted to talk a little bit about the remedies that the township attorney mentioned. Um, one of them being that, you know, whatever happens here tonight, anybody that's aggrieved by this can just apply for a rezoning through the planning commission. We all know that's not automatic. My colleague just went through the factors that we have to meet and satisfy in order to get a rezoning accomplished. That's not a remedy. That's an obstacle that we have to overcome if you do what you're being asked to do tonight, which is to change this zoning classification, and this is a change. This is not an interpretation. There's nothing ambiguous here. But to change it from light industrial to agricultural. So I implore you to think about the impact that that decision would have, at least on this particular property, when we're talking about such a dramatic change in zoning classification. Thank you.
Are there any other comments?
My name is Dicky Sweet, D I C K I E S W E E T. I want to thank, uh, Mr. Lindsay for, uh, his input and the preparation that he put before you for your consideration. Would also just like to add a little content to perhaps how, well, not perhaps, but how the planning commission arrived at their decision to, uh, make a correction, uh, at our expense. It would seem that the township has been remiss, if not, uh, irresponsible or derelict in the past in maintaining proper records. Do that end today, uh, our planning commission has put before you, uh, the task of cleaning up some thirty years of, uh, report. In, in my world, we used to have a saying that something is not always the responsibility or the fault of the person who has it last. In this case, Mr. and Mrs. Sweet, or Mrs. Sweet and I have, uh, have the property last. And, uh, so how did we get here? We saw the property was for sale, uh, the owner, uh, presented it as HS commercial. The realtor presented it as HS commercial. The tax rolls presented it as HS commercial. The map, which I don't see, I see one missing from the wall in here, showed it as HS commercial. But it was also shown as, along with the other parcel to the west, as future planning. When I questioned some of that, I was told that the records aren't complete. And maybe ought to look at rezoning. I argued against that point, uh, with the then, uh, zoning administrator. I said, I'd really just like to apply for a building permit on that lot, the one we're talking about today. I was, uh, persuaded not go that route. Uh, I think I was cordially being asked to help them clean up their records, cleaning that by asking to get it, both parcels rezoned. That didn't happen, neither one, uh. I think the way it was put to me was if they refused to rezone or to zone both of those as HS commercial, they'll let the west property go. But the property we're talking about tonight, they would accept because it has so much history as HS in, in the tax rolls. So far back as we could look, we did find that commercial taxes were being paid on the original section that this lot was split from. When it was split, it was carried forward on the tax rolls and it was carried forward and carried forward. The only thing missing is that split and where it went from HS commercial to nothing. It's carried forward on the tax rolls, but it wasn't carried forward on a map supposedly. I have a copy of that map where it's HS, uh, and I think Richard put that in his summary. I think the, probably the last thing on my mind is that after the planning commission vetoed the rezoning, uh, application. One of, and forgive me for not having names, uh, it was a quick meeting and I don't know all those people. Uh, one of the, uh, ladies, I will say that, but one of the, uh, people on the planning commission, as it was being adjourned, said, we need to get the process going to remove the HS designation from the east parcel. And here we are today. And we bought the property in good faith. Previous partners have paid taxes on it in HS commercial. We just received our last tax bill in HS commercials. We paid a value for that lot based on HS commercial. Thank you for your time.
So far, we've heard
Last name again, please.
Pardon?
Say your last name again, please.
Wyerman.
Thank you.
From people that have a financial interest in the zoning or non-zoning, rezoning of the G Drive North parcel. And, uh, I also have comments for the other two. But G Drive North, the traffic now is so busy on that road, I cannot back out of my driveway in safety. Today, when I left the drive, I didn't even get over the hill before someone's trying to pass me. People come around that corner and they drive it as if it's ninety-four, I ninety-four. I'm getting very tired of all the traffic. I'm getting very tired of the lack of agricultural land. Nobody cares about us residents. It's all, well, this is for the, the benefit of the township, the benefit of the county, the benefit of the state. What about the benefit of the people who live here? We are sick and tired of this. Every time we turn around, somebody's taking agricultural land and turning it into a moneymaker other than agricultural. I'm sorry that anyone's bought property that they were misled on. We were misled on our property too, but we've survived. It is a real pain to see everybody with their big bucks and their fancy lawyers and all this and that come up and talk for this rezoning for the light industry or commercial. We didn't want it out here. We didn't move here to have some business beside us. Not to mention the lights, the fencing, the extra traffic. I mean, just coming down my road to this meeting, there was some work going on. And I couldn't, I had to sit there for another car to pass before I could go around. And that was right on a hill, so you couldn't see too well. Luckily, somebody finally flagged me around. But I'm, I'm just tired of this. Where is it going to end? Are we going to be pushed out like all the people in Detroit and some of these other cities where, uh, businesses decide to walk in and, and take over? I'm tired of it. I am really tired of it. And I don't think that any of this property on G Drive should be highway service or, or whatever they want to call it. I think it should stay as ag. The people that live right next door, you think they're very happy about it? Thankfully, I don't live that close, but I'm still suffering from all the extra traffic and, and everything else that's going on, on that road. As for the fifteen mile ones, I don't see why some of those can't be put to agricultural use. Yes, where Midwest metallurgical was, is contaminated, but I think that can be cleaned up. It's been done in Japan when they had radioactivity. And they have been cleaning up their property. And I would say that's a, as bad or maybe a worse problem than, uh, metals and other contaminants. And you just wonder both of those on fifteen, just how much it's gonna affect our water. And the traffic, I'm just tired of this. And you don't see a lot of us Marshall Township people here because we are so tired of being slapped down by high-paid lawyers and business interests and the state. So I wish you would consider the residents who are really your tax base. We're the ones who live here, who have to put up with everything. And I am just really fed up, really fed up with this. I'm sorry about the, the property on G Drive, but I don't think that should be anything but agricultural. Or residential maybe, but I don't think it should be highway service. We didn't want all that business on twenty-seven, but it went in. And if it's mispriced or someone's paid too much, well, maybe there should be some accommodation for that. I don't want any more traffic on my road. Like I said, I can't even back out of my driveway and I've lived there for fifty-six years. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Support. Please hold on.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I speak a couple of comments? Okay, so just, just a few comments, uh, heard a lot of good public comment, right? Uh, just a, a few comments from Mr. Sweet's property. We're, we're just again, we're not rezoning. Okay, yes, you have to change it. We're not, we're not rezoning. So just look at the record, okay, and see, does that map red, match what the record states, okay? Secondly, regarding the county properties, I, I know we heard preemption. I, I read your letter, okay, I understand your letter. My friend was involved in the Pittsfields case, okay, I, I get it. The preemption's not part of your, of, of this analysis, okay? If there is a preemption issue, that is a discussion, uh, for another day, but not for, for the ZBA. Okay, on the other hand, if at some point there is preemption, it doesn't matter how the property is owned. Okay, so, but again, that's not in front of you for, for today. A- as far as, I just wanted to bring up on this PowerPoint, it was section eighteen dash four, criteria for zoning map and text amendments. When I read through section A, it says, the following guidelines and procedures shall be used by the planning commission and may be used by the township board when considering amendments to the zoning map. Are you the planning commission?
No.
Are you the township board?
No.
No, okay, the, these two provisions in here in section eighteen dash four, when it talks change for zoning amendments, that's rezoning, okay? When we should look at, uh, criteria for zoning or it's text amendments, that's text amendments when we're changing the language of the zoning ordinance. That's PC, okay, that's planning commission. It starts there. We're not the planning commission, okay? So what you need to do is look at the record for these parcels, uh, work through that record, discuss it. You got your zoning map over there, okay? See how it's zoned, you see the different colors, you see the legend on the bottom. Does it match? Does it not match? If it matches, there's no correction. If it doesn't match, then, then you can make a correction, but you're not changing the underlying zoning that's here. Any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Here, Thompson, just a few comments. Can I make a few comments?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so I'm Joanna Johnson. I also happen to serve as chair of the planning commission. Uh, and, um, maybe it was me, Mr. Sweet, that you heard me say that at the meeting. But regardless, um, as your own attorney mentioned, Mr. Lindsay, who happened to sit on the planning commission for many years, understands that we had an issue, which was not to my understanding and as Clerk Alba mentioned, had been tackled even when Mr. Lindsay was on the planning commission. So I want to make sure it's very clear that we are here as our attorney mentioned. And there is a document, um, and maybe it's my choice of words, but, um, that we formed back in January, a zoning map review committee from the planning commission um, because of the fact we have found errors in the zoning map. It's that simple. Um, and so there's a document there that can share that with you. Um, we formed, uh, um, a committee that was trying to tackle these. And frankly, we are still reviewing over a hundred different parcels, um, that we're still trying to make sense of. And as already mentioned by many of you, although I see some grins in the audience, um, we did review some of the files that was, were mentioned earlier, trying to look at minutes, trying to dig through documents, those types of things. And, uh, frankly, I appreciate the planning commission members who have taken a lot of time to try to be able to do this. Uh, I also want to share, as already mentioned, um, by our attorney is we have tried to ensure that this ZBA, um, with the, the help of our clerk as well, um, and secretary of the ZBA notified you accordingly, right? Because, um, we wanted to hear, because maybe you had some records that we couldn't find here. Uh, so I just wanted to share that bit of background, that documentation, um, is within the packet. Um, I just wanted to at least make mention of that. Thank you. I'll make a motion. Um, actually, I can go through each of the parcels if you like. Seth, should we take one by one for the interpretation?
Yeah, I, I think you should go one by one and then discuss whatever your decision is, how you get there. And, and then at that point, I would make, you should make a motion of what you're going to do.
So in essence, I'll start with number one on the agenda, one five two three zero. Uh, C Drive North parcel number sixteen two seven two zero zero nine dash zero one. I believe this is a MAEDA properly, if I'm not mistaken, Marshall Area Economic Development Authority. Is that right? I'm sorry. Um, and I do, what, I'm sorry? Yeah, okay, um, just for, uh, MAEDA, uh, for short. Uh, we did hear from, uh, Mr. Lindsay, um, and I was, we were asked as a planning commission, which the zoning map review committee, uh, also checked. And there were, we were able to find records for that interpretation um, to support that item from agricultural to highway service. I'll make a motion that we, uh, have the map interpretation for parcel number one six two seven two zero zero nine dash zero one from AG to highway service.
And I'll support that.
I'll support that.
Yeah, roll call vote.
Just before you get into that, you said we, we found some records that support that. Joanna, can you just want to touch on that a little bit more?
Um, I'd have to go back to all my notes on that. Um, but I believe we were able to find, I can find my email, I thought it was in the packet. But to Mr. Durian, I believe we were able to find minutes, um, where that was indeed, uh, verified, uh, through, uh, both the parcel request as well as through minutes that it was from AG to highway service.
It was on September twenty-fifth, nineteen eighty-five.
Okay, there, thank you.
A lot of records were included in the agenda packet, correct? As it relates to these parcels that described the underlying zoning district classifications. On the map?
Is it, oh, on, on that particular map?
From what you found?
Uh, I don't remember if that one is consistent on the map or not.
So what, what parcels are we looking at up there?
We're looking at parcel number one six two seven two zero zero nine dash zero one.
You know where that's located?
Um, so on C Drive, Mick can go, because
This is fifteen mile road.
Is that a white parcel? Is that how it's colored?
Oh, yes.
On the legend on the bottom, how, what does white say? Is that agricultural?
Yes.
So based on the records in the agenda packet and what you've been discussing, does that map accurately? does that map accurately reflect the record?
Does not.
And how, okay. So what should, how should that map be corrected?
That map should be corrected for that particular parcel as already described as highway service.
Super highway service. Is that consistent with the record that is in the agenda packet and from your research?
Yes, sir. I'd also like to, since we're on this topic, um, real quick, is we were able to work with county GIS. Um, keep in mind that these maps are created based on, uh, what is submitted to county GIS. They are not making this up on their own. They're typically getting this information for the particular jurisdictions, uh, throughout the county. We were able to, um, locate through county GIS, three different versions of the maps as well, because we were hoping that would give us some sort of a timeline. Is that a good way to describe it? And I should say Mick Woods is our, uh, planning commissioner who helped lead this committee as well. Uh, anyways, we were able to locate some maps that they had at the county. Um, and again, uh, there was some discrepancy there, I think, as well. I'm not sure if it was for that particular, um, parcel, but that is another place that we looked at for research.
Thank you. Can you repeat what the motion was? I don't recall what that was.
Sure. Um, I make the motion that, um, we approve the map interpretation from parcel address one five two three zero C Drive North, parcel number one six two seven two zero zero nine dash zero one from AG to highway service.
So, motion to correct the zoning map for that parcel from AG to highway service.
Based on the records.
Based on the records, described and entered into the record. And how about we authorize the, the township clerk to arrange for that map correction? Someone's got to make that correction. Do you want to authorize Jeff to make that correction? When you update the map?
Uh, sure, yes. I will add, though, um, that we have some, um, we're trying to also work on the four twenty-five agreements to get properly mapped. So hopefully, we can get that done simultaneously.
Is there a second to her motion?
I second it. Okay, I'll call and roll. Are we ready for that, Mr. Attorney?
Sure.
Okay. Chairperson Thompson.
All those in favor?
Well, how do you vote? Yes or no?
Yes.
All right, I will vote yes.
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Johnson, yes. Three yes. The motion was carried.
So if you're done with that one, you can go on to number two if the CBA is ready.
So I can start us off. Um, thank you, um, Mr. Sweet for being here as well again. Uh, this is related to number two on the agenda, G Drive North, parcel number sixteen one four zero 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 three dash eleven. Uh, and based on the record that we were able to locate, including a nineteen seventy-seven plat book, um, as well as, um, the information that was provided even when this was before the planning commission, uh, as well as, uh, information from the zoning maps that came from the county. I don't, I don't think those are included in the packet. And based on a lot of the research that was also attributed, um, that Mr. Lindsay mentioned, um, that we found no record that would include that that would be, uh, changed, or excuse me, that that would indeed be highway service. Out on the parcel as well on the map, I'm sorry.
Is that red, Mick? I can't.
It's the question.
Okay, oh.
Meaning that on the current map, it is agricultural. It's white. White or red? I can't tell. It's white. White, yeah.
I have a question. I don't know who can answer it, but, um, with regard to that, I think I've got the right one. Uh, but it's my understanding that when the, uh, when, where the, where the property is located for the bus, you know, the, where the buses are, the school bus, which is, I think, the parcel just immediately
East.
East of this parcel. Um, when that, that parcel was rezoned to whatever, highway service, I believe. And this, this parcel, I do not believe had been split off yet. And when this parcel was split off, that my understanding that the, that the, when it was zoned highway service, the, the master parcel was, it included this parcel. It had not been split off yet. Um, and so when the split occurred, uh, from a discussion with, when I asked of the assessor, um, the reasoning for tax purposes that it kept its commercial designation is that when you have a split, uh, from a master parcel, that the split-off parcel, unless rezoned, retains the zoning of the parcel of the master parcel. And so I, I'm not making a connection in my mind as to why this would be zoned, uh, why the status quo zoning would be agricultural when it was part of the, when it appears it was part of the highway service, uh, parcel, highway service zone parcel prior to its split. So my question would be, wouldn't a parcel split off, uh, unless there's evidence, and I think we'll get to another one where there is, where for some reason of the parcel was was not split, but it was zoned in two different zones. Uh, but, uh, but in this particular case, it looks, it just looked to me as if this was, uh, highway service, then this parcel was split off, why wouldn't this retain that highway service? Designation, I guess.
I'm sorry, you're asking me?
Yeah, I kind of, I would kind, I'm kind of asking.
Okay, so if, you have a parent parcel, like the whole, the whole parcel, right? It's zoned highway service?
It was zoned, it appears to be from the records that it was zoned highway service, yes. The whole master parcel was. When it was, I think, was Avery, Avery Motor, Leavre, whatever at that time.
So if the whole parcel was zoned highway service, and at some point it was split, it, it's split, but the zoning district classification, the split doesn't defeat that. Is there rezoning? If there's rezoning, then, yeah, but if it hasn't rezoned, then the zoning district how, of the parent parcel, I mean, that doesn't change unless there was a rezoning. I don't know.
So I think the question, if I'm understanding it, Jeff, let me try that, is if, if you've got a parent parcel, like the main parcel is zoned highway service commercial, and you split that off, and you have, now you have a new parcel number, does the zoning classification carry over to the split parcel?
Yeah, I mean, that's going to be an area. Okay, so we have a new parcel, but it's still in a, in that zoning district classification. It's not going to change the, uh, zoning district classification without rezoning and that looked at that.
So the only other thing I'll, I'll note that, that's in the record, thank you, um, Mr. Lindsay's, uh, letter included it. Exhibit G, I think it is, but I believe this is what we're referring to. This is the parcel, I think, when it was split, maybe, his notice of approval of land division. One of the things that does note in that as well, though, um, that approval of a division under the act is not a determination that any of the parcels which result from the division comply with any other ordinance regulations, on and on and on, right? So, I don't know if that builds into that or not.
I didn't pay. No, I'm, my concern was, is that, that I didn't see any evidence that the township had zoned, had changed the zoning for the property to agricultural. It came from agricultural to highway service when it was all one parcel. And then when this, when this parcel was split off, it looked to me like it should retain the highway service that the parent parcel had been rezoned to. And I, from your answer previously, uh, unless there's some evidence that this new parcel, the split-off parcel was rezoned, uh, which wasn't, I couldn't find anything, uh, then I wouldn't know why this wouldn't be highway service. Irrespective of the map, I think when the split occurred, I'm just theorizing here, that with, maybe with a couple of these, that someone didn't advise the town, the county map people, uh, of the, of that action. Maybe they did, I don't know.
His taxes didn't change.
Or the ta-
The tax, he stayed at the highway service.
Well, the tax, how it's classified for tax purpose, I've always been told, is irrelevant to the zoning. Two different things. It could be classified, it's a classification of tax classification for the purposes of property taxes, and zoning is completely different.
Correct.
Often they kind of jive, but not always.
Okay.
I'll just share, uh, one item that, um, that was linked in the information was the original, uh, let me see the date here, I apologize, it looks like maybe the nine three twenty-four, uh, planning commission meeting minutes where we had the request for Mr. Sweet, um, to rezone this property. Um, and again, you know, uh, it does mention that, um, it was zoned AG under the land use plan until twenty twenty-two. It was not designated as highways, again, I'm reading from the record, right, um, highway service commercial. Um, it was discussed, a prior request in June two thousand and three, where someone wanted to rezone it to highway service commercial. However, um, uh, it looks like it was not, let me see, there was neighbors disputing it, I'm paraphrasing here, you have to go back to the exact minutes. Um, but I believe it was not approved at that time, according to the minutes and the previous review of that particular parcel. So, I don't know.
Yeah, that's, that, I mean.
That's what I'm reading here.
It's, that's a little, that's some of the history, but to me, if, if you look at the township board's actions on this, it was rezoned, and I don't, I don't want to misstate the date, but many years ago, as highway service, the parent parcel was. And then subsequently, this was split off, and I couldn't find anything in my cursory review of the information given to us, that showed that the township board had rezoned it from highway service.
Were you able to find anything that stated that it was highway service?
That when the master parcel was zoned.
You have that documentation?
Highway service, it's in the township board minutes, and would be in the parcel file that, that you all would have for the master parcel. Should be in. Yeah, well.
Mick, can you come here?
Uh, Mick Woods, Marshall Township, um, I'm the ex-officio member from the township board to the planning commission. And in January, um, I volunteered along with my two compatriots to form, uh, Steve Bowler and Steve Riggs, to form the zoning map review committee for the planning commission, and this is one of the ones that's popped up through our research since January. We had Clerk Alba gave us several maps and things from the previous zoning administrator's office and files on all the, the parcels that he had. And we had three different zoning district maps. This one is, I believe, March of twenty-three. We also had one September of twenty-three. And it was decided that although it wasn't posted on the wall, it's not posted on the website, but we did have a copy of it, which just leads into all the corrections and the bringing up to date of everything with the zoning maps, that the September twenty-three map that we had was going to be our baseline for all the corrections that we were looking to since January. Concerning the G Drive parcels, on the March map, it shows that one parcel as being colored white. On the September map, it's red. So I couldn't, you know, it's just one of the inconsistencies, record-keeping that's going on with this. I can grab the folder, it's a thing that I discovered, the committee discovered, was forwarded on to the chair and the vice chair, and it should be included in the packet as far as that particular parcel.
Just one other item on that parcel per county GIS. Um, it's interesting timing because we were told by the, uh, county GIS, employee that in, it was AG in March, as already noted. Um, and then in September of twenty twenty-three, our previous zoning administrator called to get it changed to highway service.
Doesn't seem to be any official action, other than a phone call that was made to change it from one status to another, from what I remember.
Which, again, that's no fault of county GIS in any way, shape or form.
One of the reasons that this all got started was, I don't know how far ahead of that, but when I became clerk in January of twenty-three, after having studied the, the manual on what I had gotten myself involved in, uh, and I wish I had studied that before, at any rate, I, uh, determined one of the, one of the thing was that the map, the official zoning map of the township is supposed to be retained in the office of the township clerk and signed by the clerk, and anytime an amendment's made to it, those amendments are reflected and signed. So it would follow logic, uh, that the clerk should be made aware of any changes to any map. Um, and I could not locate, uh, any map that had been signed within either this century or the pre, prior part that had been signed by a clerk. I think I did find one that was signed back in seventies or something like that, that, that had been signed by the clerk, but all of them, they have been done since then, were on file, but they were not signed by the clerk. And they were in the office of the clerk, but they were not signed by the clerk. So I s- informed the zoning administrator, uh, that I would like, uh, that corrected, and get a map to me that I could sign that was evident and supported by all the records that were involved. And so, here we are.
I'll also share that the reason the planning commissioners, thank you Mick, um, took lead on this, is that we were without a zoning administrator. So, um, that was the other piece, so if you're wondering why that was. Uh, okay, so.
Yes, do you have a comment?
I'm concerned about my client's due process rights here, right? We have a record that we were provided in the agenda. Uh, I followed the rules that you presented to us, which was submit something, and I did that. Uh, my client presented his testimony as requested, he did that. Uh, we're not talking about things that aren't part of this record, right? We're gonna, we're talking about things that are in files, we're talking about maps that were considered. Um, we were not given, I asked Mr. Coaches for the ability to talk to the former, um, clerk.
We were not given, I asked Mr. Coaches for the ability to talk to the former clerks, because there's gotta be an answer somewhere to track this down, and I was told I could not talk to the clerks. I was told that we did not have, we did not, based on the timing, have a chance to submit a FOIA. And the land bank, I think, did submit a FOIA and got a partial response. So it feels like a decision is being made, and I, first of all, agree with what Clerk Alba is saying, and that's been my contention, that unless there was some other zoning change, it would have stayed with that, with that zoning designation. I guess I would ask you whether you have the information in front of you to protect my client's due process rights, because you are taking away his rights. If you change this from what it's been zoned in the past to ag, it's very definitely taking away his rights. So I guess I would ask you to consider that. Obviously, what you do tonight, we created a record, and you know, we'll go forward based on what the decision is.
Just, I mean, I think you provided some context, but we need to consider what's in the record here, okay? So what you have here is what you need to base your decision on.
Can I ask a question, Mr. Lindsay, please? Mr. Lindsay, I have a question for you. In your packet, I don't know if you need to bring it up there with you if you know it by heart. But remind me, I see the one where the property was split, was there, is there another? Hang on a minute, I see the approval of the split, was there anything else related to the split of the parcel in here?
That was what I was able to obtain from Mr. Avery's family. And so I don't know if there's any, anything else, the township has records relative to that. I don't think there was a combination process that is like the combination process we have now. But that would be another thing, it would be curious to look at. I mean, I have a number of questions, and if you give me sixty days to litigate it, I'll figure out, right? But, and you may have questions too, because this, this isn't clearly answered. I think the record shows what Clerk Alba is saying, but I'm not sure the record is all that's out there, so.
Certainly, I think, based on even your comments on the last paragraph that are in here, almost second to last paragraph here. Page four, that additionally, it should be noted that the township does not have a properly adopted zoning map as required by Michigan law. That's why we're here to address that very issue. So, we don't need to be threatened by litigation, we're sitting here trying to do the right thing.
It's my job, right?
I understand, I understand, but.
What you did in the first instance, which was corrected from something that was obviously wrong to what it should be. I'm asking you to do the same thing.
Which I think would then certainly showcase the fact that we have, trying to do our due diligence here. Okay. So I can make a motion. I will make a motion that related to G-Drive North, parcel number sixteen one four zero 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 three dash eleven, that we postpone based on the records until we have further review of the parent parcel, that we postpone the action from highway service to agricultural.
I'll support that.
So the thought process here is we can go back to the file, just to make sure, certainly, you know, if we have a Freedom of Information Act, we certainly would comply, obviously, by law. But, you know, just take a look at that parent parcel, just to reflect on if there's any further documentation related to highway service.
Can we just do a voice vote on that?
That's fine.
I don't have the parcel number. I'm just real quick, I'm sorry. I do not have the parcel number of the parent parcel, but I just wanted, for the record, we'll take a look at that. So, aye.
Aye.
Is it in the subject line? No. Okay, I will move on to number three, one five two nine zero fifteen Mile Road. These are parcel numbers, there's actually two parcel numbers. One six one five zero zero three nine dash zero one, one six, excuse me, one six one five zero zero four zero dash zero zero. The intended map correction based on the records is to move from light industrial to AG agriculture. There is records that were provided within the packet. It was somewhat of a complicated parcel related to the long history of this particular area at one time. My understanding was there was a foundry on the site. There is some questions related to split zoning, non-condi, or non-conforming use. Then there is a split, I believe, on the parent parcel related to an antenna tower, if I'm not mistaken. So it was a complicated parcel to review. And what you have before you are a variety of minutes. There's a minutes from nineteen seventy two and some information within the packet, there's also a map that was found. There's a land division application. Apparently, this must have gone to the Michigan Tax Tribunal as well. If I'm not mistaken, the previous township supervisor, I think at one point, owned this particular parcel, as well as foundry. So, it is our thought, as, and I say our thought, meaning the zoning map review committee on behalf of the planning commission. That's the information that we were able to, to locate related to that, that provided the record for what's intended this evening. Do you want to, do you want to speak at all to the conditional use for the split parcel and anything on that? Or just try to help make some?
Well, we're an extensive record on this, and it took us a while to sort of, sort of, sort our way through it. But looking through the agenda packet, as you work your way towards the back of the packet, you can see that there's correspondence and meeting minutes. You could see how there was a public hearing, I believe, in the September of seventy nine. There was a request of, back then, there was, and you could see, I mean, it keeps going on. There's a petition for an amendment, one's updated. I don't have a date for that, at least it's not going here. But I think what's, what's telling you, you gotta notice the public hearing, I think that's on E six, okay, in the attachment. That talks about the purpose of that public hearing. It does talk about going from, looking from AA to HI, which was heavy industrial at the time. Then you go to E eight, you could see where, and this is, this is where the, the whole genesis of the split zone came. You could see where they're describing the parcel, and you could see where it says zoned ag. And then the other, other side says zoned HI. So that's where you could actually see the split in the parcels. Then you could also see additionally, there's some correspondence back in April two thousand and ten. That was about the whole Verizon tower and the parcel number associated with that. But that's a, that's where you can see where the splits came from. And that's what made this a little tricky, because split, I mean, split zoning does happen in our townships, and sometimes you do have one parcel that has two different zoning district classifications on it. I know that has to be tricky for applicants when they come before us, because you have to, you know, figure out what, what. But in here, when we're asked to make an interpretation, you need to go through the record that, that's in this, that's part of the agenda, and figure out as part of this LI, because I know the property was subsequently zoned LI, and what, you know, which part is LI, which part is ag, because it does appear in the splits on.
As it relates to the map, I have no idea how that would have, over the years, related to mapping it. I have no idea. I'm a, I'm sorry, I'm the GIS man.
Right.
So it appeared from the record that the last action of the township board in zoning on this matter was to provide for the split zoning, am I correct?
The result.
That was a result.
Yeah, it seems like we were trying to establish the proper zoning, I'm paraphrasing here, for the foundry that existed.
The foundry there now or not, which doesn't matter, really. Because the property is what's zoned, and the property is partially zoned light industrial and partially zoned agricultural currently, but the map doesn't reflect that.
It does not.
And is there anything related, Seth, to conditional use that comes to part in this at all?
Relating to the foundry?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, it'd be lawful non-conforming use, but they may have lost those protections. Usually, it's an intent to abandon in passage of time. And I think there was a structure there on, right, and then it got ripped down sometime.
I think there's still a partial structure.
But it hasn't been used in hell long, since ninety seven. So.
I know the public hearings both, and I love to speak again.
That's, we let other people speak. How about your name again?
To the podium, that would be great.
Give your name one more time, I'm sorry.
Sure, Rachel Foster, I'm with the land bank, and the law firm is Warner, Norcross and Judd. A couple of things that I think are important for context purposes. When I look through these documents, I think we've covered this a little bit tonight, when you're dealing with a rezoning, how does the Township Act, it's a planning commission recommendation, and it's the township board that does a rezoning. When I look at these documents, I don't see minutes from township board meetings. I don't see much in the way of an explanation about what would have occurred at the planning commission. I mean, if you start from the back of the packet and you work your way forward, the Verizon stuff doesn't really have much to do or speak to the zoning issue we're trying to address tonight. The map that's in there, that's E eight, that talks about the Midwest property, and then had someone's handwritten ag on there. I don't know where that came from, I don't know what kind of document that is, I don't feel like that's an official township action. What I think happened historically over time, when you look starting back in nineteen seventy two, is this foundry existed on this property for so many years, it predated the existence of the township zoning ordinances. Okay, and then it looked to me, when you flipped forward, that there was an establishment of a heavy industrials district under your township zoning ordinances, and that, of course, was where the foundry was located. And there was a desire by the township to get rid of that zoning classification. They didn't want it to be heavy industrial anymore. In order to do that, they expanded on the light industrial zoning district and specifically said, we're going to make a foundry a conditional use in the light industrial zoning district in order to give us some flexibility with the foundry property. So it just occurs to me that the zoning classification for the foundry property would have had to have been light industrial, right? Because otherwise, the foundry couldn't have been there, and there would have been no reason for you to change your zoning ordinance. And then as you go through, it looks like, you know, there's an appraisal, but again, that appraisal has like a CC at the bottom, where an appraiser is opining on the zoning as being agricultural, which I don't know that that's really official evidence in the record of the township changing zoning classification for this property from, from light industrial. And you can even see there's some confusion in the records. There's, I think, maybe a township employee asking maybe a former township attorney, what's the zoning for this property? I think you've got some handwritten, really old zoning minutes where there's a question mark, and they're like, what, you know, what was being asked of us, it's unclear. And the most recent evidence, this land division application, which was from two thousand and ten, it's pretty recent, it's fifteen years ago, current zoning at the bottom, light industrial. So again, I just would ask you to keep in mind how the township acts through the planning commission, and then the township board to change zoning, and then what you have in front of you, which doesn't seem to show the township board or the planning commission making a recommendation to change zoning.
Well, E three is the township board minutes of October fifteenth, I think, nineteen seventy nine. It says the request of Midwest was rec, recommended.
Can be approved, commissioned.
Could be approved, yeah, by planning commission to be approved.
Okay. Well, just from what we have here in the record, I mean, again, I don't, Steve, that there is a lot of documentation here that can go in any different directions. But the closest that I can see is that map, and I think it was a surveyor's map, if I'm not mistaken, is at the E map interpretation, I'm sorry, you guys, hang on. E eight?
I may break in, if you look at B eight, the zoning is agricultural with grandfather industrial use.
I think E seven might have come in to go with E eight. So, E, it's looking like we have a split zoned parcel.
Been helpful if whoever prepared this, I mean, from Trader to Grau Matthews and Kendall, would have put a date on that. That would have been helpful. I'd like to ask a question of Mick. Was, I didn't see in here, in your research, did you find any minutes of the, the minutes of the planning commission that recommended whatever action to the board?
Search, went through the file for the parcel.
Okay.
And went through the associated tax record file. Because you never know what you're going to find in those, what you're going to find in the actual parcel.
Great.
Then, based upon the dates, what we were looking at, went to the planning mission minutes, if there were any, went down to the four minutes, if there were any available. Everything that we have found of any of the parcels in question tonight is based on available township records.
So I think it's okay to hear from Mick for context, but again, the decision has to be based on the words. Thank you.
Okay, for the sake of discussion, I'll make a motion that regarding number three, one five two nine zero fifteen Mile Road, parcel numbers one six dash one five zero dash zero three nine zero one and one six one five zero zero four zero dash zero zero. Based on the records that we have before us, I would say that we have a split zoned parcel between light industrial and agricultural as cited in exhibit E eight.
Support that. Second that. I'm supportive. That would require a roll call vote, Chairman Thompson.
All those in favor?
But we got to ask. So, Chairman Thompson.
Yes.
And I'll vote yes, and Vice Chairperson Johnson.
I'll vote yes.
Three yes.
Fun. We have parcel number, or excuse me, address number one four nine 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 fifteen mile road, parcel number one six dash one six zero 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 nine dash zero zero. This is from light industrial, based on the record, to agricultural. And I have to relocate. There was, in that particular parcel, as noted, there was no record that we could find that would support the light industrial designation. And I forget which parcel this is. Mick, do you remember where this parcel is located for fifteen mile road? I have to look at it. Hang on. Uh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I apologize. I probably should have put a, we should have put a map of each of these parcels in here, but.
I'm sorry, I was thinking about something as the other group left.
Oh, go ahead.
No, can you just repeat what you said? I was, I, I never, I don't want to say what I was going to say out loud. I'll tell you. Did you have a question for me? I'm sorry.
No, not at all. I apologize to the audience as well that probably, um, it's the first time we've been doing this, right? So probably having a parcel map with it would be very helpful to everybody. So my apologies on that for the packet from the planning commission. Is there anybody here to speak? No, there's nobody here to spoke on this one, right? Okay.
Yeah, I couldn't quite place this one.
I apologize.
Fifteen mile road.
One four nine 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 nine.
Seven nine, it's four.
Sorry, Mick, we're putting you on the spot. Well, for the sake of discussion, or go ahead. I'll make a motion that for. Oh, it might be. It might very well be. Okay. Is it across the street then on that? Okay. Um, one four nine 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 fifteen mile road, parcel number one six one six zero 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 nine dash zero zero zero. Well, I'll. No, no, that's okay. I'm going to make the motion. We can certainly have the discussion. I'll make the motion based on the record that this particular parcel have the map interpretation corrected from light industrial to agricultural.
This is the.
About.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, the apartment building?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Seth, did you have some?
No, I'm thinking about some. Go, go ahead. I'm sorry.
I made the motion. I don't know if I got a second, but.
I'm just, I probably, I probably will.
No, it's okay.
Just a second, but I'm just, I'm just. Well, that apartment house has been there forever, so it probably predates any zoning.
It very well be.
It looks like it does.
Well, I mean, you know.
I have no idea.
Yeah. Well, I'll support it. Second.
Yeah, but I don't know that it's, how long it's been there.
I second it.
That's, right. Okay.
Any questions about it? If there's no record supporting why it's light industrial? That's what it is on the map right now? Light industrial?
Yes, I believe so. You guys find it on there? I think so. Or is it ag? No? Okay, so it is ag. Sorry, pardon me. Is it ag you guys or is it light industrial?
Light industrial.
That's what I thought. Okay, that's why I said light industrial.
Really?
Back in the day. Just.
Okay. So we would need a roll call vote on that. And I'll start with Chairperson Thompson?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. And Vice Chair Johnson?
I will vote yes as well.
Three yes.
Uh, moving on, I'll just go ahead and continue on. One three nine nine five West Michigan Avenue, parcel number one six two zero one zero two four dash zero one. Based on the record, the interpretation and the date, the records would show from highway service to light industrial. And I was just going to see what we had specifically on that. Sorry, you guys. Um, one six two zero one. I thought we actually found a record of that. Uh, I think there were minutes for that particular one. Mick, do you recall? Again, my apologies that I don't have it here in front of me. But I think we found, um, records to indicate that moving from highway service to light industrial. I'm sorry. Uh, it looks like we had, I apologize. Um, it looks like we had no, this is two zero one zero two four dash zero one. Um, we had no documentation, documentation to support the highway service. So it was actually light industrial. Yeah. That's wrong. Okay, I'll make a motion that, based on the record for one three nine nine five West Michigan Avenue, parcel number one six dash two zero one dash zero two four dash zero one, that for the map interpretation and based on the record, that it go to highway service to light industrial.
Support.
Support it.
Yep. And that'll require a roll call vote. Chairman Thompson?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Johnson?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Three yes. So I have a procedural question at this point. We've approved several. And there's one that, that were deferred action on, taking research a little further. Um, so those would be clarifications of the map. Uh, what to authorize, do we need a separate motion to authorize, uh, to recommend the map or authorize the map? How would we word that?
Yeah, I think the first motion may have included that language and I think we just probably forgot to carry it over. But I think a, a motion you can make right now would be to authorize, uh, the township clerk to arrange for map corrections pursuant to the motions that were passed tonight.
I have a question on that. So, um, Jeff, um, the planning commission has, we still have, and there was like a hundred different parcels on the spreadsheet and we're also trying to work on the four twenty-five agreements so they can properly be classified on the map as well. Frankly, I think there's some issues there. Well, there are frankly, same type of situations that we've just gone through. Um, and so my request would be, um, in such a motion is that we wait till the compiled list if we can.
That's fine.
From the planning commission so that we can do it all at one time. I have reached out to county GIS, trying to get a meeting scheduled. Certainly the clerk is, you know, can come as well, but we're just trying to make sure that we can, you know, get a, a map that it's comprehensive because there are still some issues related to the four twenty-five.
And there's board action on this. By the, so if you want to wait till everything's kind of in order, I don't see an issue with that.
Is that, do those correction, I shouldn't say corrections. I think clarifications might be the better word. I don't think we're going to go through the same process here. I think it's just a matter of making sure we've got all the properties within the four twenty-five as well. Should that, it's not really a map interpretation at that point, so that doesn't have to come back to the ZBA.
No, that one, that's just a way to.
Okay.
Think of it as like an unofficial overlay district. Like this is, you could tell where the area is.
Yeah. And so the, the public can tell where it all is, right? Because, um, and, and frankly, um, I, I know this isn't before the ZBA, but just real quick is to know what expires when. I mean, it's just very, it's very confusing. And then when you're trying to do a master plan, it's very confusing. So. Sorry.
The, the longer we wait to get a map, you know, and it could take another two or three months going at the pace that we're doing with the corrections that we know we still have to do and the other things. It's going, it's going to impede the board, uh, subcommittees' discussions with the city on the overall master four twenty-five. So I think at some point, we should go with our best recommendation on, on the corrections we've already done at some point in time and then work on the others to continue up, updating them. But the two maps that, this one and the one that we're using as our baseline, we should get those updated, I feel, pretty soon to aid the, the board subcommittee in the discussions with the city on the overall master four twenty-five water franchise agreement, just our continuing discussions with them.
And dovetailing with that, um, it looks like it, and I will, held up until tonight for our next meeting of the ZBA, which, um, I polled and to get a date for a meeting. And it appears that October sixteenth at four P M. was the best for, for us all. Um, but we have a variance request, uh, at that time. And I would be hopeful that the item that we deferred action on tonight would be clarified, that we could clarify that at the same time at that meeting. And then maybe we can proceed, uh, with at least getting an updated, approved, verified map, uh, subject to further, I mean, it's always going to be subject to updating, so.
Yeah.
Does that sound good?
I just have a procedural question, if I may. Um, so we all want progress on the map and certainly, um, I think if we can, we'll see what we can do with our ZMRC. I don't know. That's probably more of an issue for the planning commission. Um, but for the item that we postponed action on, um, the G drive and, uh, they're not, President Mr. Sweet's not president nor is Mr. Lindsay. Um, I imagine we potentially might get a FOIA, which is totally fine. But, um, do we, should we go through the same public, should that be part of a public hearing, um, notice? Or is that just simply, since we postponed action, we can let them know that it'll be on?
Well, a couple of things. If you have a request for variance, you've got to do a notice of public hearing anyway. So you could add that on to, to, as a courtesy. I don't think you need to do the mailers within three hundred feet. And it's something where we can let their attorney know, hey, look, this is set for October sixteenth, so they have notice. And, but since you're not spending extra money for the, you know, specific publication, uh, you know, for this, the continued hearing, I think you can just add it on to the, the request for variance. That way it's.
So then let me ask our fearless ZMRC leader, uh, do you think we'd be able to take a look at the files, say, by October one, just to see if there was anything within the, just one more look, if there was anything that related to the zoning, uh, and the map for, um, the parent parcel?
File folders for the parcels. We'll go through the tax file folders again. We'll try to coordinate against planning commission meeting minutes, board minutes, do that. Good luck, yeah.
Okay.
We should be able to do that.
Okay.
It's important enough to be there.
Yes, thank you.
We can do it.
Jeff, are we able to add it to that?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah. And if there's more information that comes up, we'll just need to add that into the record. So if more information is found, I would just, we need to update the agenda because their record's getting a little bit bigger.
Excellent.
Under board member comments, I would just like to thank Mick and his committee for, uh, for all the work they've done on this. And I know Joanna's worked on it, uh, as well. Uh, it's not fun. Anytime you have to research anything, under the best of circumstances, it's not fun, especially, especially further back you go in history. And it just stresses the importance of having accurate, up-to-date records and access to them.
Did we need to cover anything for item ten for station one update or?
I, I, I think that's, okay, unfortunate carryover on the template. Because it's not for us.
I'll, I'll echo, um, if I can during board member comments here, uh, Mick Woods, Steve Riggs, Steve Buller, uh, they've taken this on, as you showed, the record would show since back in January. And then frankly, the research has come from a different areas. I sometimes provided some to research. You know, there were some that came to our attention, uh, just things we had questions on. We are not, I want to make sure that it's clear on public record, that we are not picking on one area or another. There were some, um, points, I think, in some of the attorney letters that, you know, some way we're trying to impede. We are literally trying to correct, as frankly, Mr. Lindsay, if he was here, former planning commissioner, alluded to something that we've had many years of, of trying to do our due diligence here. So I want to just echo the thank you from the committee. Um, just really appreciate the time and effort and, um, you know, I'm proud of the fact that we can say that we've got a map then that we can, you know, stand, stand behind. Um, and the clerk can sign, so.
I understand. Discovered. There are the information that we're looking for based upon best available.
That's all you can do, right?
Well, and I, I'm sorry. And one last thing I'm going to say, I really will, this be the last thing, is that's why we asked in the letter, if somebody else has records, please produce them so that we can, you know, it doesn't mean that the records here are all intact respectfully, right? So. Final citizen comment? Is that where we are on the agenda?
Chairman, it's over.
Oh.
Ready?
You can ask if anybody's got.
Does anyone have a final comment? No?
Want to move to adjourn? I'll make a motion at, uh, seven forty-eight P M. that we adjourn, uh, the zoning board of appeals meeting.
And I'll support that with our, and just note that our next meeting will be October sixteenth at four P M. We'll have a variance request and, uh, the, uh, item two from carryover. And that would require our voice vote.
Yes, sir.
So you can ask us how we want to vote.
How do you want to vote?
I'll vote yes.
Oh, yes.
Oh, yes.